All right, here we go. It is 7:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We appreciate your being here. We'll start with invocation by Doug Lee, Two Rivers Fellowship. Doug, if you'd be so kind.
Will you join me in prayer? Our heavenly Father and Almighty God, we come before you today in humility. We acknowledge our limited understanding and wisdom, our need for dependence upon you. We call upon you to grant our mayor, our city council, and our city manager the faith to trust in your divine providence, and that you will grant them understanding, knowledge, and peace as they make decisions on our behalf. We thank you for those men and women who serve our community, and for those who work in our departments. We ask for you to grant them safety as they perform their duties. We ask that your kingdom come, and your will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Right here.
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 Here. A current copy opens. Meeting Act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Before we get started tonight with our agenda, I do have an award, and Chief Thompson has an award as well. Let me just go through that real quick. We have in our audience a young man by the name of Matthew Woodward. Where are you, Matthew? I see you. Yeah, can you just stand up for a few minutes? In fact, why don't you come up to that podium for a minute, if you'd be so kind? Okay. It's my privilege, on behalf of the City of North Platte and the council members and our city administrator, to honor you with an outstanding citizen award. And it says, "In recognition of the act of heroism performed on Sunday, May 14, 2017, Matthew had noticed a house fire with flames coming out of the window while riding with his mom, Vicki, on West Fourth Street. They immediately called 911, stopped at the residence to make sure no one was in the house. Matthew then immediately saw a garden hose on the east side of the house, and turned the water on and continually kept spraying water on the fire, with no regard for his personal safety until the fire department arrived." So, thank you for that, Matthew. We appreciate what you did and what your mom did for the City of North Platte. And I think Dennis, Chief Thompson, he'd like to come up and say a few words as well.
Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
Indeed. It is a privilege to be here this evening and to be standing here with this young man. I'll kind of repeat some of what Mayor Livingston said, but on May 14, 2017, 11-year-old Matthew Woodward was returning home with his mother Vicki when Matthew noticed smoke and fire coming from the window of a house in the 2,000 block of West Fourth and alerted his mother. Mrs. Woodward stopped her car to call 911. Matthew exited the car and ran to the door of the house to alert any occupants. With no answer at the door, Matthew retrieved a garden hose from the home and began spraying water through the window until fire department personnel arrived. We are confident that Matthew's actions directing even a small stream of water through the window provided enough cooling effect and steam conversion to prevent much greater damage to this home. The North Platte Fire Department is proud to award this certificate of excellence to Matthew Woodward.
(applause)
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for all of us.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, much.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. We appreciate it. And ladies.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and start on the agenda, the consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Item number one is approved minutes of work session and regular meeting on May 16, 2017. Item number two, place on file ML and W reports for the April 2017. Item number three, approve one-year renewal of interlocal agreement with Lincoln County for providing services and fuel to the Lincoln County Roads Department and authorize mayor to sign documents for the city. Item number four, accept bids and award contract for an equipment storage building at the wastewater treatment plant, Jackson Concrete LLC of Hershey, Nebraska, in the amount of $94,674 and authorize mayor to sign contract. And item number five is approve an application by Pal's Brewing Company LLC for a special designated license on eight consecutive Thursdays between June 22, 2017, through August 10, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Fort Cody Trading Post located at 221 Halligan Drive for their music series.
Move that we approve items one through five of the consent agenda.
Second.
Regular agenda, public hearing, item number six, public hearing in action to adopt ordinance number 3966 to rezone certain property from B2 Highway Commercial District to an R3 Dwelling District located at 121 East 12th Street and described as Lot 1, Stegman's subdivision, Lincoln County, Nebraska. This is a public hearing. Did anyone wish to speak on reference to this item? Yes, ma'am. If you'd be so kind, just give your name and address. Oh, come on. Yep, there you go.
Jody Shaw Heinz, Realtor for Gateway Realty. My residence is 1111 Lake Avenue in Gothenburg, Nebraska. I work for broker Sherry Born at 111 Halligan Drive, North Platte, Nebraska. I've been a Realtor for her for four years.
Okay.
I represent Andre and Janelle Franklin. Before purchasing this home, I talked to Judy Clark multiple times, as did the Franklins. And the listing broker on this property is Joanne Perlinger. Joanne and I have worked together through this process. The owner, I believe, used to sell or have a coin business or something, and he has passed on, and his son now owns a business or owns the home. The home was partially remodeled. They've done a beautiful job putting in two new bathrooms and living room flooring. And then I believe the gentleman passed. There was no kitchen when the Franklins purchased this. There was no flooring in any bedroom, hallway, or the foyer area, and no gutters. A loan has been secured through Adams Bank and Trust, Mary Higgins Loan Officer. I have a letter from her. I didn't, I got it late, so I didn't get it printed off, on my phone, letting us know that not only loan approval has been secured 100%, also a grant through the government. The government gives $5,000 grants to so many banks every year. They have secured that. And also, it's be like a knife loan. That is all per Mary Higgins, secured and good to go. This morning, Jim Bain gave us 100% on the re-inspect appraisal.
Hello, I'm Andre Franklin.
Would you like to let us know what you did?
Excuse me, would you say your name again, please?
Andre Franklin.
Andre?
Hold the line.
What's your address, Andre?
Currently, I'm at 2300 East Philip, Lot 49B.
Okay.
And over the last couple of months, I did put in a new kitchen, cabinets, the gutters, new flooring in each room. And we put a lot of work into it, and we would like it to be residential.
Okay, thank you.
The closing date is to be June 30. They have not only secured financing, but Mary asked that they have a checking and savings at Adams', and they've done that. They've done everything we've required them to do. The fees have been paid to planning and zoning, and also the surveyor?
Yes.
Okay. So, really, we come before you knowing that these, sorry, I put my heart into selling real estate. And I've watched these kids work so hard, so it's a hard thing for me. I apologize. So, we come for you, asking that you would rezone that as residential. And I think that's all I had here. Do you have any questions?
That's the last thing that has to be met. It's just this, isn't it, right, Jody?
Yep, everything, yeah. We got, that's why I was so happy the reinspection got done today at 12:30. And I got a, I have documentation, if you need anything, just sitting here on my phone that everything is good.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just had a quick question. Ask today in order to meet your closing date, is that right?
Because you wouldn't meet until July?
We have one more meeting this month, in two weeks.
June 30 is our closing date.
So, you need it done before then, right?
Preferably, yeah, I believe so, yeah. They, they went to the, when did you go to the Planning and Zoning Committee? They, they've been through the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, and that has been approved.
Yes.
Sure. Okay. Judy, if you'd be so kind, thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Andre, thank you.
Yes.
I have a two-part question.
Okay.
If there's a house already there, why does this have to be rezoned? That's the first question. The second question is, it was my understanding that you were never much in favor of spot zoning, and that appears to me to be what this is exactly.
Okay. Why does it have to be rezoned, is the first question? Is because it is zoned commercial right now, okay? Now, they could occupy the home as a home in a commercial district. That would be what we would call a non-conforming use. That is possible. Now, what happens a lot of times is mortgage companies won't give loans on homes that are in commercial districts. They just don't like to do that. Why, I don't know. I'm not a banker. But that's just the thing. The other problem with that is if you don't rezone it, if they wanted to add a garage, they would not be allowed to do that.
They could get a variance, though.
No. You cannot get a variance to add a garage in a commercial district for residential purposes. No. They would not be allowed to add a garage. You cannot increase a non-conforming use in a district. So, if this is, if this is a residential use in a commercial district, you can't increase that use by adding another residential structure as a garage. They wouldn't be able to add on to the house at any time if they wanted to add an additional room, a sunroom, anything like that. Anything for residential purposes, they would not be allowed to do to that home. Now, they could upkeep it. They could do some interior things, but you can never increase the use of that residence on a commercial property. That's where you come into a big, you know, a big thing as far as, do you rezone it, do you not rezone it? Could they occupy it as a house? Yes. Could they improve it? No. They could upkeep it. That would be it. So, that's one reason why you would need to change it to commercial. Now, as far as spot zoning, when you look at this, there is commercial to the, be the west of the property, but there is also residential to the east of the property, directly east. It abuts it or is adjacent to the property. So, spot zoning is when you zone a piece of property right smack in the middle of a commercial district. This one is on a border of a commercial district, so it is right next to residential. So, all it does is cross the street to get a residential property.
Across the street is zoned residential?
Yes. Yep.
Real quick question. Comp plan wise, this is what you planned originally, is it move to residential?
The comp plan, all the way down 12th Street, actually, except for the Jeffers corridor right there, to the east is all R3 or, or.
That's what we wanted to move it to anyway, right?
That's what the comp plan says as of right now, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Make a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion passes. Public hearing closed.
I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3966. Jay, you've got to read it.
Yes, would you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning Lot 1 of Stegman Subdivision of Lot 9 in Isaac Dillon Subdivision of that part of the northeast quarter of Section 33 Township 14 North, Range 30 West, at 6:00 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, including within the corporate limits of the City of North Platte, a part of the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 17 Township 13 North, Range 30 West, at 6:00 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules on ordinance number 3966, requiring three separate readings.
Second.
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 3966 to rezone certain property from a B2 Highway Commercial District to an R3 Dwelling District located at 121 East 12th Street and described as Lot 1, Stegman Subdivision, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
And that motion passes as well. Item number seven, adopt ordinance number 3965 on third reading to include within the corporate limits of the City of North Platte lands owned by St. Elizabeth Anne Seaton Catholic Church in the northeast quarter of Section 17 Township 13 North, Range 30 West, at 6:00 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska. Yes, please.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, including within the corporate limits of the City of North Platte, a part of the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 17 Township 13 North, Range 30 West, at 6:00 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
I'd move that we adopt ordinance number 3965 on third reading to include within the corporate limits of the City of North Platte lands owned by St. Elizabeth Anne Seaton Catholic Church in the northeast quarter of Section 17 Township 13 North, Range 30 West, at 6:00 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
Motion passes. Okay, item number eight, authorize mayor to, mayor to execute First Amendment to site lease with option agreement with U.S. COC Nebraska/Kansas LLC successor in interest to GCC License LLC.
Move that we authorize the mayor to execute First Amendment to site lease with option agreement with U.S. COC Nebraska/Kansas LLC successor in interest to GCC License LLC.
Second.
There were a handful of provisions that I pointed out to you in your staff summary report that would be different, would be additions to the agreement that was entered into in 1999.
Do you think it's in three, it's favorable to the city?
There are more owners to the city. They, there are renewal terms built into the lease agreement. The original agreement provided for three, five-year renewals. They want to increase the number of five-year renewals from three to nine. The original agreement requires them to carry general liability coverage on the property of $1 million. They're adding a new provision that would require us to also maintain general liability insurance on the property of $1 million, which we do through ARM. They would add a provision, a new provision, that would require mutual indemnification, which, and, and a whole harmless clause that would work both ways. And I think they would add a provision, a new provision, that allows them to assign or sublease this agreement without any consent of the city to whomever they please. And finally, they would add a new provision, giving them a right of first refusal to buy this property if ever we want to sell it. Those are new provisions that, and, and this has been quite some time in the making because we have been back and forth on this a number of times.
What's a negotiated position?
I told them, I, I finally told them, I'll give it to the council and see what they want to do. So, that's where we're at.
Do you have any objection to any part of it?
That's why you get the big bucks. Well, I'd say for the most part, the provisions I've just highlighted to you, I'm not sure how they benefit the city. Yeah, I, I can't envision why the city would sell that property, but I suppose, thinking out loud, if a new opportunity came down the pike, and we saw an opportunity for someone to go into that property that we wanted on the property, we would first have to offer it to these people before we could sell it to someone else.
But I would suggest to you, Glenn, that that's going to be pretty hard to do because of some of the previous uses of that property.
I'm just.
Yeah, they did. You already voted.
Yeah, we already voted on this. It's voted, done, approved.
Okay. So, thank you.
We're on number nine.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item number nine. Authorize mayor to execute small cell master license agreement with All Telecommunications of Nebraska LLC, DBA Verizon Wireless.
I authorize the mayor to execute small cell master license agreement with All Telecommunications of Nebraska LLC, doing business as Verizon Wireless.
Second.
Question real quick.
Sure.
Doug, you and I sat through a, a thing talking about small cell and that kind of stuff, and one of the things they talked about was conforming uses in terms of neighborhoods and stuff like that. I didn't see any kind of language in here that described that. Like, Lincoln has, if it was down certain streets and they had Art Deco stuff or whatever, that it had to conform to that in other cities. And maybe I just missed it, but I wanted to check.
Well, that's why I got into a discussion with them about the definition of a small cell. The definition of a small cell that you see in the proposed agreement is significantly different than what they originally proposed. And there was quite a bit of back and forth on the definition of a small cell. And the definition of a small cell in this agreement, one thing that I insisted was that the small cell be defined as an enclosure of no more than six cubic feet. And so, they would not be building a 100-foot tower in a residential district. It has to be limited to six cubic feet and associated equipment. That's.
What about aesthetics? Is there any stipulation on aesthetics?
No, I'd have to look here.
Because, because here was, I remember is, some of those cities had put, in Nebraska, had put stipulations on and around those in order to make sure that they didn't put them in a historic district and it looked, you know, like this giant ugly thing, you know, even though it's small, I understand, but it didn't take away from the districts that it was in, or in the residential neighborhoods that it was in. It didn't distract from those areas that it was a part of. So, like I said, Lincoln, they had them up on a street light, but then they had, they made them, that company put an art, you know, piece around it that then conformed to their area.
Yeah, and frankly, some of this drafting was performed after we were in that information or that meeting. And I think they, I.
Are they amenable to that?
I'm sure. I, I mean, what, what do you want? And I'll certainly pitch it to them.
My thought is just, you know, that it's conforming to the neighborhood that it's in, you know? I guess that'd be, if you want more detailed definition, you know, I mean.
I'm not sure what that means.
That, that it, that it matches the area, that the neighborhood that they're putting it up in.
I guess the question I want to know is, do we have any control? I mean, they want to put something up. Do we have any say that they can leave it, that put it there or not?
They want it on our poles in our right of way.
Yeah, but I mean, do we have any say on which?
But we, but we have the right to work with them on which poles would support the structures that they're going to put on them.
Okay.
So, you know, to Andrew's point, you know, we're not going to let them put it somewhere where it's going to create.
Okay.
An unsightly deal. You know, we're going to work with them and put them where, you know, they'll work, but yet we have the say on which structures they actually put them on.
Yeah, that, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. They've pitched this thing, and, and I tried to get them to include language that indicated that these were a canister type of a small cell, which would be six cubic feet in a canister style. But they, they did seem to want to reject the canister-style antenna, because in some instances, they do actually have a small antenna that they attach to the pole that may stick up six feet, which they didn't want to be limited to the canister style. But the, the whole idea is to cram these cellphone towers into six cubic feet so that they don't have to build a 100-foot tower in a residential district.
Okay.
But if, if you're not satisfied with the small.
If we can control where they're going, I mean, we can make sure that they're not going somewhere that's going to impede, I don't know, like I said, a historic district or someone, like, right in front of someone's house on a pole, and they're like, oh, my goodness, what did you just put right there? That kind of thing.
I agree. Yeah, and there is that gives us the final say on where these.
So, we can always negotiate that back out later if they want it in a certain spot.
I'm sorry?
We can always negotiate that out if they want it. Like, we need this spot right here, and we're like, well, but it needs to look like that, you know?
What they do is they create circles of coverage, and they go into there, and they monitor those different areas for the coverage in there. And so, what they'll do is they'll come to us and, and, you know, visit with us about what structures we have in that area that would serve that purpose. So, we do have the final say on where they put them.
Okay.
If they say, we, we'd like to put it here, and we say, well, we don't like it there, we want it over there, we have the final say.
Okay. Thanks.
I suppose it could be. I hadn't thought about that.
Some are, Glenn, but the thing you've got to remember there is, is that there probably is going to be an opportunity at some point there where they're going to want to put them on the streetlight poles, too.
Isn't the nine renewal option a little bit? But the, the whole idea is to cram these cellphone towers into six cubic feet so that they don't have to build a 100-foot tower in a residential district.
Okay.
But if, if you're not satisfied with the small cell...
If we can control where they're going, I mean, we can make sure that they're not going somewhere that's going to impede, I don't know, like you said, a historic district or someone, like right in front of someone's house on a pole, and they're like, oh my goodness, what did you just put right there? That kind of thing.
I agree. Yeah, and there, that gives us the final say on where these things...
So we can always negotiate that back out later if they want it in a certain spot.
I'm sorry.
We can always negotiate that out if they want it. They're like, we need this spot right here, and we're like, well, but it needs to look like that, you know?
What they do is they create circles of coverage, and they go into there and they monitor those different areas for the coverage in there, and so what they'll do is they'll come to us and, and, you know, visit with us about what structures we have in that area that would serve that purpose. So we do have the final say on where they put them.
Okay.
If they say we'd like to put it here, and we say, well, we don't like it there, we want it over there, we have the final say.
Okay. Thanks.
I suppose it could be. I hadn't thought about that.
Some are, Glenn, but the thing you got to remember there is, is that there probably is going to be an opportunity at some point there where they're going to want to put them on the streetlight poles, too.
Isn't the nine renewal option a little bit gracious on our part to give them that? No, that, that doesn't exist in this agreement. That was, I was starting off about the last renewal.
I have a question. Do you charge a rent for those, for that space?
$700 a year per pole.
Per pole? And then there's something about in the UNICAM that we're going to have to, or they may roll that back, or...
Well, there was legislation in the UNICAMR this last year that basically, frankly, capped the amount of rent that we could charge for this type of thing, and it was frankly well below what we've negotiated here. So after that failed in the UNICAMR, they came back with this language that says if a law is passed that supersedes this agreement, then that law will control. I guess you can require that that be taken out before you enter into the agreement. I'm not sure that if the UNICAMR passes new legislation next year, that that supersedes your right to contract at this time.
So what you're saying is if they pass new law, what we do would make any difference?
No, I think, I, I don't believe the UNICAMR can pass legislation that overrides our agreement that we entered into before that legislation was passed. So really, I, they, they've thrown that language in, and they may argue that it's effective, but I'd say there's a good chance that that language won't carry the day.
That motion passes. Item number 10, enter an agreement with Kirkman, Michael, and Associates to perform professional engineering services for developing a revised hydraulic study for the east side of North Platte.
Move that we enter into an agreement with Kirkman, Michael, and Associates to perform professional engineering services for developing a revised hydraulic study for the east side of North Platte.
Second.
That motion passes. Item number 11, adopt resolution moving the June 20th, 2017 city council meeting from its regularly scheduled time from 7:30 PM to 5:30 PM.
Move that we adopt resolution moving the June 20th, 2017 city council meeting from its regularly scheduled time of 7:30 PM to 5:30 PM.
Second.
Got a quick question?
Sure.
So on this, does, is there a reason why we don't just meet at 5:30 from here? I mean, is there like a city, I mean, is there a reason why we don't just meet at 5:30 regularly, right after most of us get off work or whatever?
It would require a change of the ordinance.
Okay.
And that motion passes. Item number 12, adopt resolution moving the July 4th, 2017 city council meeting from its regularly scheduled time on Tuesday, July 4th, 2017, at 7:30 PM to Wednesday, July 5th, 2017, at 5:30 PM.
Moving the July 4th, 2017 city council meeting from its regularly scheduled time of Tuesday, July 4th, 2017, at 7:30 PM to Wednesday, July 5th, 2017, at 5:30 PM.
Second.
And that motion passes as well. Item number 13, claims.
Move to pay the claims.
Second.
And that passes as well.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.